Single public discussion. Everybody's here, we'll go down. Colby, we'll go down to you, to 911.
We're just wanting to set up the E and O one board. Same way as the EMS boards kind of set up where we have some say so on what we talk about every month and stuff like that. It has to be everybody's customers and new stuff like that, so.
So how's the E and... I'm sorry, I-
We've been, we've been, I've been on the board for a long time, like eight years or more. And we just go down there every month and we don't make it anywhere really, but you know, me either take a headache off of you three to where our board would be set up like the EMS board, so.
What do you think, Sarah?
I think it'd be good, more oversight, and then have more say so.
You guys need to, um, abide by open meetings, so you need to post your agendas in my office. You need to post your meeting schedule for the next year by November 15th in my office. Just let you guys know some, that's, no matter what you guys do, you guys are subject to open meetings and you need to, and somebody needs to be keeping track of your minutes, which I know Lori, Lori does and stuff, but if they come back to audit you, they'll come to you on your minutes and stuff.
I can have that done to you by the end of the month, hopefully, maybe. You have until November 15th for the next year. I didn't hear-
And, and the board, if we're not gonna have to be set up that way, I mean, we got a lot tomorrow, I'm sure, but, you know, been on there for a long time and I just, I feel like I just could sit at home and fight with my wife and children and then, I mean, that's what I feel like we're doing down there, so. I have really a say so, whatever we say, so. But, I mean, it's a lot to take on, I know that, but I mean, thank all the other people on our board where we can handle that. I mean, it takes them off your guys' plate where you guys would be over a bunch of things. I mean, we still come to you for purchase orders and all that stuff, so.
Right.
Still have to.
At least, I mean, if we have something that's really bad, then we need to come to you. The main guy's not your Colby Caswell, he's the main board member, so he's still on the table. I don't know if that's all I pretty much-
So we're gonna have to have a resolution on that, yeah, that's what I was saying, yeah, there's nothing else.
I just figured we'd get this started anyway, and they know what all it takes, but-
So, how many board members are you wanting, so we can get that all in the resolution?
Five board members.
So you're still wanting to have five board members? Are you wanting to add a commissioner to the board of mi- members, or-
Or city council.
Or city council, or are you wanting to add any more board members, I guess is what I'm saying.
I don't know, that's, I don't, I don't know, sorry.
Where are you?
I don't know, that'd be something, probably think about-
Well, you got one, two, three, four board members here, right?
Yeah, I don't know who's out there.
And you really gotta start-
You're not on choice, I don't know, for sure. But, I mean, we got nine fire departments. It'd be nice to, you know, get one from every, I mean, almost, you know, have a lot on there, but I mean, I think someone from the sheriff, you know, they should have a say so, you know, uh, Sarah, you know, she's through dispatching, so you might, she would have to be there all the time. I mean, there's a lot of people when we have these meetings, not everybody shows up, they just think it's just a, you know, rub off, you know, but I mean, it's, a lot of them just take it pretty serious, I mean.
Well, it is, I think most counties don't have fire departments on their board.
Right, I mean, I don't, I don't know what-
County commissioner, city councilman, maybe one person with a fire department, it's not-
I don't know how you guys want to set that up, I mean, there's a lot of ways, I mean, I just didn't want to maybe get all per day, I mean, I, we gotta probably think about all that stuff. I just figured we could get all, get you guys thinking about it at least, so we can get something about, you know.
It has to be approved by requisition anyway.
Right.
I mean, by a resolution anyway, so.
Yes.
So I'd say to what, you'll need to tell us how you want it, so then we can set up a resolution for that.
Do I need to like help you write that, maybe?
No, you can, but it's not very hard, so. It's just, I just need to know what you guys want, so we can-
I mean, you see, commissioners wanna be on there, I'm gonna ask you that, so we know.
There it is.
I mean, that way we can, I mean, we're gonna have to ask everybody. We start with you guys, anyway.
You put me down, I'll try. I know, it's always had guys lived up here, I didn't have to come down.
I'll do it if you want me to, but it'd be better if you did for me.
Go ahead.
You're closer.
Yeah, I got closer. You think of it, somebody from the city or not?
I probably should, shouldn't you?
I don't, I don't know who'd do it, I mean, I don't-
We can have George bring Larry up.
Or the county people from the counties. I don't know.
But I mean, I'd like to get more people involved in, I mean, there's a lot of people in town, I mean.
Right, okay.
I mean, if there's a way to get other people involved in making them up on the board or whatever, because I don't know all what goes on in this county, I mean, so.
Some things you don't wanna know.
Right, I understand that, but I mean, on the sheriff's side, I mean, we don't have the sheriff there half the time, so I guess this board's been on, so.
I would think the more numbers of people different from like dispatch and you guys and the city council and the different entities all getting together would give us a better, you know-
I'm just trying to help out the county, it's all I care about, I care about the people, so.
Representing-
I don't know what goes on the north end, I don't know what goes on the south end of the county, I just know what goes on in the middle, so.
I've said that too before.
Just a middle man.
So, I don't go on the south end very often, and I don't go on the north end very often, so I know what goes on, so. It's, it'd be nice to get with people from all areas to be, so we know, we can make it better, so we, that's the only way we're gonna make the city council more better, is we should talk about it, I mean, and get stuff done, so.
Well, I used to come up every Monday, go to Sarah and see what, oh, what a good, what a good, bad, and ugly, and everything else, and how that she's run it, and so. And I'm sorry, but I just hate to be a turkey every day when I live down there.
Yeah, I don't know if any of those guys back there have anything to say, I mean, that's how I s-
I think that's the main thing, just trying to, trying to get a board that, that has the ability to, you know, steer something and, and take control of it, and get it working, and make it happen, you know, that's, I think that's what they ask, it's-
They're good things about the board, I mean, they came a long way, have done a lot of things.
They really have done a really good job, but so.
You've got plenty of others on the line.
I don't want one, too, but always helps.
That's all I have to really say.
I don't have to deal.
I, I don't think anyone disagrees, I think more oversight-
You're welcome.
And the more people we can get involved with it, the better, I think. You know, I've tried to, I try to implement a lot of what they do, but I don't think there's, I think it'd be good if they had more oversight, and more people interested, the better, so.
So you got a commissioner, do you want a city person or not?
I don't, I don't know, since it's all county.
Yeah, I don't think a city person would work, it's just me.
I agree, I agree. I don't think any of them would.
You probably do need a commissioner, because the commissioner has more idea what the county can do and what they can't.
Are you gonna need an odd or even a number, doesn't matter?
It's an odd, isn't it, odd number?
There's five now, right? Two, six.
And that's just being odd, it needs to be on.
One more. Who's on your board right now?
The, uh, Colby Caswell, uh, me, Colby Arnold, uh, that's the county fire chief.
Lori.
Lori Palmer. And, uh, Rob Sims, and, uh, Bob Rockenbaum.
How many's that?
Six.
Six.
The business-
Lower, sorry.
Secretary.
Johnny Nichols going to board.
No.
I can't see you get whatever.
Can we set that up where any one of the three, where we just put it as one commissioner and any one of the three of us can go, like if I'm going, Jake can go, or whoever.
Yeah, we put the sheriff in more.
You'll have, so you'll have to put that in your resolution that we have a first, a second.
Yeah, first and a second. You want the sheriff on there?
Who's your president?
It would be nice.
Or the under sheriff.
I mean, somebody representing the sheriff department would be nice, but someone, I don't know what goes on with sheriffs.
Vice president.
If there's a much better way, we can help each other out, I mean, we're on scene or anything, I mean.
Colby, are you the vice president?
Yeah.
Oh, I guess so, I'm sorry.
No. We just gotta-
Well, you might be now. Why are we setting the resolution up on here? Do you want it to, where every January somebody comes off, or if you have, you know, you need to have a-
Term limits.
A term limit, thank you.
I did have a term limit, it's five years, and I went over that, so.
Obviously not, 'cause you're still wanting to-
Yes.
But I mean, so many can come off each time, and then, I mean, all you guys have to do is appoint them again, which, and then again, needs to go through the board, when they appoint them again. That's kinda how we have the ambulance board, is they have so many that come off each year.
So commissioner, sheriff, still be an odd number, it'd be fine, right?
So you want a sheriff on there also, or not?
I'd like to have a sheriff, somebody from the sheriff's office.
That makes sense.
We'll have a representative.
We got five, right?
We got five right now, then secretary, then, uh, but sheriff, I would wish on that one, so.
Right.
Somebody from sheriff's, or whatever.
Who, um-
We'd always have to have like two, in case somebody comes and happens.
Right.
You can have two coming off every year, and then one by themselves, so, do you want me to just start somewhere and make term limits on them, or you want to tell me who comes off?
Or do you want to, do they need term limits, okay?
Yeah, I mean, that'd be fine, I mean, it's just-
Okay, alright. I'll, I'll shoot you a copy of it, and, both of you, and that way, if you have anything that you need to change on or anything, then we'll put it on next week's agenda.
Okay.
Good.
Alright, I appreciate it.
You might go down and check with Rick and make sure that's already, they put them on there, so that you'd be in surprise.
Anyone else, it don't matter, we gotta have two anyhow. Gary's under sheriff, right?
Just gotta wait some, wait some up over there.
Right.
Show up, so, alright, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you guys.
I'll be out here, I'll go back to destroying houses, if anyone hears this.
You guys here for the employee health, or what?
Yeah.
That's good.
Um, you wanna vote no action right now?
I'll show them, I'll figure.
All favor?
Alright.
Employee health, right? Okay, come to employee health. Roses for employee health premiums for 2018 paid by Hope County.
They turned in our premiums, um, a couple weeks ago, so we always do it, how much we're going to pay, and then we take on the 50% of the employees.
Wow.
Look at this. You notice it did go up? That one's what, 646 on there? Last year the employees was 61874.
You want me to read it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Whereas the UF County Board of Commissioners has made this decision past year to pay the county employee health, dental, basic life insurance premium, and, whereas the Office of Management and Enterprise Services set the rates for 2018, and whereas for 2018 Health Choice Premium for the employee's health, dental vision, and basic life is 64604, and for 50% employee's spouse and children's health, dental and vision also. Whereas the UF County Commissioners wish to continue to pay the health, dental, vision, and basic life insurance premium as long as it's financially feasible. Now therefore, it be, therefore be it resolved that the monthly insurance premium of UF County will pay for each eligible employee for the period of January 1, 2018, 2018 through December 31st, 2018, will be $646.04, plus the amount of 50% of the employee's spouse and children's insurance, done at Cherokeeville, Oklahoma, this 11th day of September, 2017, for period of January 1, 2018 through December. Now you guys have anything to say?
Yeah, um, I know all of us have talked to each one of you, and, uh, I personally feel like that that's, it's, it's really not fair, because we started out with full benefits, and I know for myself and most everybody in the sheriff's department, we've all got pretty large families. And essentially, from what Lanito sent me, um, with me paying, having to pay 50% of my family, that's essentially cutting my pay close to $700 a month. Now granted, we don't make a hell of a lot of money to begin with, and don't foresee any pay raises coming down the pipes either, so, um, there's gotta be some other options out there. Um, I spoke with, uh, police chief out of Moreland, Oklahoma, last week, and he told me, I mean, they cover their, their employees, benefits, full coverage, family and everything. He said there's options out there, if anybody's willing to. I mean, it doesn't, I mean, I'm assuming we don't have to stay with Health Choice, um, but there's gotta be something. I mean, it's sad to say that I've got, I've kinda got the feeling from some of you that you really don't care about your employees, and that's not right. I mean, I think you're gonna lose employees up with this.
Can I say something?
You can afford it, go ahead.
Can I say something?
Okay.
These men fought for that 100%.
Louder, louder.
They fought for that. I've been sitting in this office, they fought for that during budget time. They got outworked.
Well, from everything I've seen, I'm not-
They fought for it 100%.
Well, I'm telling you, from everything I've seen and read, and the things that I've been told anymore, I honestly don't know what to believe.
And you gotta be careful who you believe.
Well, I get different stories from everybody.
That is one thing that we have, we, it seems like every time that we go to a different person, we come up with a slightly different story. Uh, some people say, well, we've got the money to do it. Some people say, we don't have the money to do it. Some people, I, I, the point is, we keep getting these conflicting stories. Um, I don't know where these gentlemen stand. At the end of my month, because of our paycheck, and because I had to move into county, my family has approximately $100 at the end of the month that we can spare. That's it, of our paycheck. $600, that puts me 500 in. Uh, you know, um, not trying to use this as a sob story, but it is an example of where most of us on the sheriff's department are at, and I know I've talked to a few, uh, county workers on, for the road workers, and they're saying that they're kind of in the same boat. They aren't gonna be able to do that. And that's where TJ has mentioned, we're gonna be losing employees. It's not because we're disgruntled, it's because we can't afford this, and our jobs are so intensive that we can't go find a second job.
So, and it was even mentioned to me, um, somebody made the comment, you know, well, just put your kids on senior care. Well, that's not a good idea. What's that gonna make our county look like if all your employees are going to put your kids in senior care?
Even if we-
It's not that, I don't qualify for it. I make just enough money that I don't qualify for it. So, I mean, I know there's gotta be some options out there somewhere, you know, and like Morris said, we're being told, we've been told, and I've been told by numerous people, the money, there is money there. So, I don't know.
Okay, I understand, I know it's tough, and, and it'll add for you guys, you know, but also, I do know people that work for the county that do not have dependent, have not had a payment on insurance, and they have not received any benefit of all of this the, these years too. So, yeah, I understand your side, and yet I know that other people do, do, do.
Well, here's the thing that's disturbing to me, too, is everybody that made that decision, they don't have big families. All the officers don't have big families.
I'm, I'm not disagreeing, I understand we're in a tight spot, I get that, but there is your side.
Go ahead.
And I'm one of the ones that don't have dependent, and I have not quarrelled about it, I don't mind. I hate it that it's gonna have to be that, but I think you're taking the wrong approach. Nobody voted on it because they didn't want you to have it, and you were told that the amount would be paid as long as the money was available. And I just feel like you're thinking they're doing it because they want to not give you something, and that is not the case. None of us voted because we didn't want you to have that money. But we also have to watch out for money to pay the bills and, and, and make sure that there's money to pay, sour, we don't wanna have to lay people off because there's not money there. And when that oil money was coming in, it was easy. We didn't have problems like this. But that money has went way down, and hopefully, something will happen and maybe the money will come back. And this decision isn't a permanent decision, it'll be talked about every year to try, you know, to make sure that they can pay, pay that insurance. We'd love to have it paid, but nobody wants employees to leave.
Valerie, am I right that our budget, the money coming in has gone from over 5 million to 883,000? So that's what we're dealing with. When it, when we were taking 5 million in, they were flush with a lot of things, and just think about that much cut that we're dealing with. It's pretty serious.
Please understand, I, I don't wish to leave a sour taste in anyone's mouth here. Our intent was not to come up here and accuse anybody of anything. Uh, we wanted to come up here, and, and the four of us specifically, we're unable to do it, and so we wanted to be able to be heard. We don't, we don't wish to accuse anybody here, but we do wish to be heard, and, and, and for these, these things to be on people's minds, if they weren't, and if they were great. This way, we're bringing it to the forefront. That was our main objective.
You know, the county commissioners, we work, the, the laws and, and stuff that we work with, you know, there's enough law books to stack around this table and guidelines we have to follow. We have our duties to keep the county running, and, I mean, that's, we have, you know, we have guidelines that we have to work with, too. So, don't ever think that we're trying to, um-
Is changing insurances, insurance companies, is this a viable option for us?
We tried to-
We tried it, we checked them out, I was saying-
No, I wasn't gonna say-
Well, it was more or less, or what?
It was a whole lot less, but I got, thought it down.
I've seen, I've seen the numbers that Moreland was running, and I can't quote them to you right now.
Who are they with?
Uh, I couldn't even tell you that, I can find out. We can get that.
Well, I can, I can tell you guys, we, we just went to paying everybody's insurance. We, that was, you guys probably weren't told, because you weren't there, but we said, if the money goes down, we won't, you know, we have to do something. I worked here all my life, I paid for my kids and everything else. Matter of fact, my youngest daughter, I didn't like the county insurance, I put her on, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield, it was cheaper. Yes, there's cheaper, and there's higher, and there's whatever, but right now, we just gotta take it so the county's operating.
Well, we weren't required to have insurance until President Obama, well, before, and so now we are, without, if we don't wish to have penalties on our taxes.
So, we, I think we did the best we could. Uh, what else? I mean, I almost had her in tears, arguing over it, right?
Well, I guess one of the things that kinda, that kinda upset me when I first heard about this was, I heard it through the grapevine. There was never no, no notification given to employees or nothing.
When you signed up-
I just happened to hear about it, and I started asking questions, and that's where I come up with the only-
When you signed up for insurance, so I told you until December 31st, 2017, you didn't ever-
I know, when you guys made this decision, there was nothing ever sent out saying that this is not what we're gonna be doing at the end of this year.
I, I told my employees that they would, it would be no longer available, but you could have.
I told my employees ahead of time.
Well, that, that may be a breakdown elsewhere.
Yeah, it's like, I went to each office and told them, if it didn't get handed down, and you guys, and I'm sorry, you guys, when you're not here all the time, it's very hard, but your office was notified, and it should've went down to each one of you.
And in the end of the year, we'll go over again, right? Or six months, or whatever it is, four months?
And our salaries are even figured by the amount of income that come in. There's a guideline for that, too.
Yeah, correct.
We have to re-figure that every time, every year. I wasn't told that when I wrote for county commissioner, but I found out in one of the meetings, so.
And I'm, I'm like Valerie, my kids are grown, or whatever else, you know, so.
Sometimes they grow, and then there's more that come.
I hope not.
You have to find out how to do it in old age. I've been there with you, 100% of the income.
Anyhow, thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, we do appreciate.
Yeah, I know.
We appreciate y'all letting us an opportunity to help.
Get the name of the insurance company, though, and we'll research it.
Yeah, we'll research.
The market prices with the, the OPH and W again, and we'll do it again.
We got a couple contacts up there, we'll go talk to them.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Go right ahead.
Is this something that affects the year we're getting ready to start, coming for the budget we're in right now, that is 17, 18, or is this only for the 19?
No, the problem with our insurance is our insurance is calendar year 2018, which then affects two fiscal years.
Right.
So it affects, affects 17, 18, and 18, 19.
Right.
So that's the problem with Health Choice Insurance, is where its calendar year affects-
Is that other one then, different?
OPH and W is fiscal year. Makes, makes it a little easier to budget, because you get your, you know, their option period is before budget time, and their premiums come out. Now, the insurance companies, they was discussing, I have no idea, because I don't know what it was, but I know the one that we researched before is fiscal period.
The city of Moreland shouldn't have too much people like we have.
Correct.
Yeah, but then to compare to City of Woodburg, if we're gonna compare.
So this, um, the OPH, I remember, you know, we had to do all that, but what was the deal with it? What was the, I mean, is it the, I don't, I don't, you know, I can't recall what, when we were talking about what the issue was.
Yeah, uh, there was just stated that they didn't feel like that they were gonna be the best decision for the employees, and, you know. I know Woods County had some hiccups when they went over there to them, but I haven't heard any complaints, but I haven't asked them about any complaints.
But I think that they went up pretty high, too, or something, part of the counties I had talked to, or whatever.
They had a 7% increase, we had a 4% increase, so, you know, but they were still quite a bit lower.
Who is the deciding factor on that, when you say they?
Commissioners.
Yeah. Was the coverage the same when they go pay, and?
Pretty much.
Have to be pretty comparable, I'd get, I'd think, I can't remember.
Yeah, they were pretty, pretty comparable.
They're the ones that started with, um, if you go to their little doctors and their surgery centers, so they pay 100%, and then Health Choice picked that up also, their next option period. But like I said, you know, they're, they're like, they're six months behind OPH and W, because their start's six months earlier than beyond fiscal year. And there's some, some concerns still about, um, any pre-existing things, some covering, but the guy said right there in the meeting that, you know, it's a group, they have to take everybody, everything would be taken over. And I can research them again.
Are there guidelines, like we pay those guys?
As far as incentive, I mean, or as far as like premiums, or-
I mean, their wages or insurance?
Yeah, wages.
It's up to the sheriff, right?
Or the bad guys.
Well-
Well, I make the same thing for you.
We'll do research, just for the first year.
Oh, yeah, we'll do, I wish we searched it.
We can always research it, yeah, for the first year.
We've got some good officers.
I mean, we find a resolution, we can always come up with a different plan before January 1, if it's bad.
Well, we need a site up for a couple of months, no?
Yeah, we gotta get months, yeah.
The ones, the ones with our option period in October.
October, yeah. I have to have it on the computer by the first of November, so.
Yeah. But, you know, I'm quiet.
And again, I don't know whether somebody, I mean, it's gonna take them a period of time also to, I know, or, the hundred employees was the big thing, and we are-
Right, close.
Well, we're a little over now. Well, we're a little over now.
Yeah.
I think when I turned just the, um, the, um, direct deposit in this last month, there's a hundred and two employees. And you have seven that are not direct deposits, so.
Yeah.
You know, last time they said that they would take us over, even being right there on the border, they would still take us on without having, you have to, they have to, um, do some additional riders and that stuff when you have more than a, a hundred employees. But he said that he'd take us on no matter what, and I'm in.
That's what I did, I, I put Christina on Blue Cross Blue Shield, it was a lot cheaper. All right, but, you know. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I got big families, I didn't have anything to do with that. I don't know.
Sure.
Don't take me wrong, don't take me wrong, I'm a good guy.
And, you know, um-
Go ahead.
Well, when they come in saying they're going to have to quit, I don't, I don't think that's maybe the best way to go about it.
They gotta, they gotta employ, I mean, they gotta insure their family or pay the penalty. I mean, that's their choices. Um, in Alhopper County, there's not too many employees.
I don't think there's a penalty anymore. Chuck took that away.
Did he take it away?
I didn't say anything, but I'm pretty sure he did. Because last year was an issue, I didn't have to have my, because he-
My son had to pay the penalty last year.
How much did it cost you?
Uh, six hundred dollars.
Yeah, there was a penalty last year, but some people were excluded for whatever reason. I got excluded.
You got excluded?
But I think it was taken away.
Was it because of the college student or because of your college student?
I did look into it though, but I'm pretty sure it was taken away once Trump was in office.
Yeah, it was.
For this year, coming up.
For seventeen?
Yes.
That was also posted in paper because we got the minutes right there, don't you?
Well, and like I said, and every employee has been told when they come in-
Right.
That till December thirty-first of two thousand seventeen, it's paid a hundred percent. And at the time when they was coming in, I say, and I don't know what it's going to be-
Right.
Because we hadn't made that decision, but as they come in now, most of it's fifty percent. So, they were told.
I think we're pretty fair with them.
I think goodness that we paid three years of insurance. I mean, I had two kids on there, so.
Yeah, and do the same for me.
Yeah, you and Valerie.
You cheater.
I know. You want my kids? Why don't you marry?
I don't need any more kids, or grandkids. I make a motion to approve. All in favor? All right. We'll go back to the boring stuff in another minute. So, uh, you and Lanieta, you're going to write just, how are we going to do this deal for nine-on-one?
I have no idea. Oh, I'm just going to put the people on there and put a resolution on it, I'll just copy the EMSs when they do their board.
All the, all the regulations and all that, or whatever they have?
Yeah.
I'll just copy where we do their board check, and send it to Colvin, and send it to you, and send it to Lori. And if they agree to it, then we'll put it on Lani's. I just, if I haven't heard back from them, we'll, we'll do it another way.
Might take a load off you too a little bit, might it?
I don't know. They, I mean, they still need to understand that, you know, their POs are still in.
You have no warrants, right? Now, here's the time to take, take a nap.
Oh, Shane, I forgot to tell you, we have a folder for you.
We have to do that, right?
Since you don't have a, ran out of trays, so remind me later and I'll show you where that folder is.
Do I need to check this folder?
Yeah. Yeah, you'd rather stick in tray, we can get you a second tray, but I think we tend to run out of it.
You can just show me later.
Get it to, you know, OSHA standards, I've been to, I'm just kidding.
Oh, my.
Are there, are there warrants for paying that? Do you approve each one, or are you just going to sign a big bulk?
Nope, they sign each one.
Okay, and you approve each one as you go?
Nope, they, they, all of them as a group.
We sign them all and approve them one time.
Okay, if there's one that they pull out, then they make note of that.
Okay.
Haven't pulled, haven't pulled any out in a long time.
No, we haven't.
You saw, right, after all you won?
I'm going to bed.
I'm going to bed.
That was a good thing.
Tucker, yeah, I did.
I'll try to tuck it out.
It was kind of something because there wasn't a plane in the sky for several days.
In Chicago, that was weird. Because in a big city like that, you always see them. And there wasn't one.
Uber made me stay and help him finish the job before he dropped me off.
I, I remember the, when that murder building bombing more than that one. Because Christina said, Daddy, Dad, why'd you kill the babies? Well, I'm not going home.
I don't remember that one.
Huh? I just told my-
That was in nineteen ninety-four, right?
I just told my kids, remember that day for the rest of their lives.
Children move weeks. Second chapter.
All in favor?
All right.
Blanket purchase horse. Got one for three, one evening.
I don't have any.
What?
I don't have any buckets.
Hell's going to freeze up.
I know.
Make a motion to approve. All in favor? There's no road crossings, right? Nothing else, just report.
What?
What?
How am I going to fund my end of the county this one?
I know.
You get all the money in there, no road crossings, cheater. Take a nap. Yeah, I go on bed, get on the lawn mower. Everybody hate feeling innocent, get on the lawn mower. All right.
Best time of year.
Make a motion to approve. All in favor?
All right. Yeah, that ragweed was blaming last week, it, that took me out. I didn't have, you know.
County clerk to go on a bid for cascade system for under risk.
Okay, I know, I'm looking for it.
Okay, cascade system, oh, it's going to be lotion, or cascade off the mountain, or what?
Thank you, I swear, I thought the same thing myself, but they set me straight.
Is it a?
The third page, there is their, um-
Cascade system?
Specifications, if you want to sign off on them. It's kind of like a-
Cascade system, you're, you're SCBA packs.
It was on a toothpaste.
Isn't that the cascades, about the brand of a?
No, I'm sorry, I did type it on the first page.
That's just what you call it, symptom. We, we changed ours from a portable one, and we had a generator we could pump her on to, to, we've got bottles now.
Through the stem.
Because that generator was always, you know, what'd you say?
Single-phase compression air, air storage system with four UN storage cylinders of metal capacity of five hundred and nine cubic feet air.
Doing good.
At six thousand P S I G, enclosed containment fill station designed to fill at least two scoop of SCBA bottles.
Doesn't really sound important.
Either separate or simultaneously, the system needs to have dual regulator able to fill twenty-two sixteen and forty-five hundred SCBA bottles safely. Also fill HPA bottles. They all need to be certified and everything else.
Great, we've got ours in an enclosed trailer now, so we can take it right to the fire.
So, check you, what's going to do, I don't think I've got that stuff.
I keep wanting to say scoop, but I have to say SCBA. Really excited to do it.
Just, yeah, sign off on the first page, because-
Hold up, hold up.
Do what?
Hold up with one of your pressure rigs?
Yeah, or one of our personal pickups, whichever, it's a hand-his.
I was thinking-
We bought a sixteen-foot, he's got a letdown ramp on the side, on the back, and a side door. We got all, all the generators in there, outside of what's on the rest area. SCBA setup and extra lights and fans.
You need an oil filter, drainage, and avalanche, still be hooked up to it.
Yeah, you can just put your SCBA cylinder on, turn your valve on, and watch your gauge before we have fun.
I appreciate the update. Yes, sir.
It does.
I make a motion to approve, second. All in favor?
No.
All right. Can't go down mid from one of Morris SCBA units for a rescue, I've got that.
Those are attached on the backside, the backside where it's on the front side.
I appreciate that very much. Thank you for hearing from me.
Thanks for hearing it.
What does SCBA stand for?
You too, my friend.
It's very, front page on there. Come on, Jay.
It'll say right there on the front page.
Well, it, it's a pack you put on your back.
Self-contained breathing apparatus.
Yeah, yeah, I couldn't think of it.
I knew it was on there somewhere.
Saw the smasher coming out of it.
Six-point beer, we need to put that on, are we at Dry County?
Yes, we are, we got to get that put on.
We need to put that on the gym.
What do we put on?
Six-point beer stuff.
We got the resolution, we're going to go on there.
I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to remember to call a guy from the Able Commissioner.
You say we're a dry county?
Yes.
That was Carl Eaton, it's called.
We're from a dry county, aren't we?
Yes, we are.
We're not the Texas kind of dry county, or there's nothing, no, but-
A dry county in me means to sell any alcohol whatsoever.
Not Texas, but here, no.
Was it me in Oklahoma, was Dry County meaning Oklahoma?
We can't sell anything out, can't sell everything under the six-point.
Yeah, I know, like, buy the drink and stuff like that.
Liquor store?
Oh, you mean like in grocery stores or community stores?
Yeah.
Then bars or anything?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Liquor stores are in the community.
They can't sell it like-
All right, it's going to vote, it's got to go to the people, but-
Still will be the-
It's going to go to the people.
So, it'll be six-point O?
I'll dig out the newspaper that was in there.
What do they, what's, I don't know if they haven't done yet.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
No, when it went to the dances, it was B Y O V, right, your bottle was supposed to be. You want it real quick, give me, give me a drink out of his bottle, with their name. Rising in?
I was just, you can't go anywhere in the United States.
They're taking three-point two beers.
They're doing them all till we-
That's what I'm, I'm, drinks, just do them all at once.
No, I'm just talking about the analogy of Dry County.
Texas Dry County is dry, there's none.
Well, in Alabama, it's still Dry County too, like any other, most places. When you say Dry, that means none.
So, they got, yeah, what did?
Not in Oklahoma.
There's always an exception.
Yeah, we are it, in that regard, it's, it's just funny.
We need to put that on gym the next time.
Do you have the resolution typed?
We're going to have to have a resolution.
I'll call, um, Grant County, I'm sorry, that's just the inventory papers that you-
We don't sign any.
They just go with it, I just pulled the ones out. I pulled the ones out that she emailed, but I didn't pull the ones out that he brought up to me.
I can't, I can't remember what exactly, I know major county commissioners approved, so.
Grant County approved it also, I'll get both copies.
I can't remember if it was regular, however.
I was wondering, Able Commissioners, they had something.
I bet, I bet they'll be one of the ones to tell you how to do things.
It happened. Ryan called back because we, business, Shane took, gave her my phone, she took the deal, but I didn't call him back.
Did you guys update your grader? What do you update to?
Yeah, we, we lease them, we run them for three years, train them back in.
Okay.
So, if they lease you, you still have to put them on there this way?
Yeah, technically, we don't own them, yes, we lease them. We lease them and lease our Mack trucks.
So, when you, when you lease them, do you pay the insurance on them, or is that?
They're covered under our claim.
They're covered under claim insurance.
I know, I know.
Every three years, we go out on bid and we-
A lot cheaper.
Yeah.
If they're going bad, you just-
Well, your trading value is really, still got two years warranty on it. And they give you a real good trading value back.
And John, and, yeah, and another thing is, when we didn't used to do that, I think we took back five thousand dollars of filters we didn't need. State lease purchase, whoever got the bid, you know, could be Komatsu, could be Caterpillar, could be whatever. You got to keep them eight years, they'll do anything. It's a much better deal. It's sort of like Alphal County started doing it, everybody else is doing it.
And we wrote it on the contract this year, if we got a grader down over forty-eight hours, they got to bring us another grader to replace that one. So, you don't have a lot of downtime.
And price, same time.
I mean, I've got that extra grader right now, so if he does beat it.
Well, it doesn't take too long, you have forty-eight hours on the grader, you know.
No. And so far, they're all the same.
Yeah, they're all the same.
Both, they were supposed to be last time, but we had one that the air cleaner was one in, smaller, and one that's bigger than the rest of them. Couldn't get the thing in there.
Really?
Right.
That makes it nice to, that way, if, if you need a filter real quick and I didn't, I'm going to do a district size.
Well, yeah.
I imagine it was closer for you to go all the way to, needed to get it, then run all the way down the-
Well, for me, yeah.
Chase bar.
But, uh, anybody, you just go down, you tell them to go jump in and run that grader for the carman or wherever, you know, it's the same thing. And then we'll, and we got John Dirlane cooked, have you got John Dirlane cooked up yet? Huh? We're just getting our last grader today. We leased the Mack trucks too.
Only thing I'm going to get in one of the ball is, I was hoping beer today, they're supposed to send us some kip from the chain go over there. Same there, oil sample, we haven't gotten any.
Yeah.
Are those graders going to be going out on bid, or are they just going to be turned back in to the company?
They've already been bidding everything.
Those, those second kids on these aren't the things, they're all hatchbacks.
Yeah, they, they come out, see how many eight hours on them, how they look and everything else, and they put a value on them.
I'll set it up on top.
Yeah, but she got to put it on the bottom also. She did it with the fillable, but it didn't turn up that way.
Those are, is that mine?
And I found the San Diego District yesterday.
Where, where were you at?
Going, uh, I mean, we went west, I was, I don't know, past this prison. We wanted to place some Gregory's there. Death on our-
No, you didn't find the San Diego.
I thought it was pretty sandy.
Well, you got right past Macaulay and Betio, with the Tataria.
Were you, were you going to put, I guess you'd come in there and put some, I don't know.
Show them where we kept it.
Sir.
Oliver?
Yes, Oliver. All in favor? Yeah, I've seen business.
Move with Karen, sir.
All in favor?
All right.
Oh, yeah.